I think we're gonna start. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the Hopkinton Town Council of April 21st, 2014, with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minutes of April 7th, 2014. Approved request of National Grid in Verizon for proposed new joint stub, pole, and anchor to remove tree guy location on Camp Yagoo Road, except the following report, town clerk.
I know there's a minor correction that I noted to these certain, there's a small spelling error, which he's gonna correct afterwards, but it's Dennis Page instead of David Page, and that's on the first page of the minutes.
I move to approve the town council meeting minutes of April 7th, approve the request of National Grid in Verizon, and to accept the report of the town clerk with the changes.
Second.
Motion made in second, any other discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First, public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard? Next on the agenda is town council report, AZ Corporation visit, myself and a few other councilors, and Bill McGary, who else? Bill, I'm trying to think who else, we had a bunch of people over there. The planner.
Brad Ward.
Brad Ward, yep. They had their first anniversary at the location of the old Renova lighting location, and so it was an event for that, and also they wanted to show off the new machine that they built. It's called a CHP Combined Heat and Power. It's like a big generator that's used in hospitals that runs 24/7. It's green, it's clean, and it's pretty neat looking. Anyway, so they built their first one that's going up to a hospital up in the North Shore. So, anyway, it was a great visit, and I appreciate them relocating from Stonington while having another office in our town, and it was a great day. And I wanna thank Mr. Lorenz for inviting us and being a part of our town. That's it. Next, under Town Manager Report, Bill McGary.
Thank you. Just very briefly, on April 10th, Council President Frank Landolfi, Jim Lanfair, and I met with National Grid officials at the Crandall House, and they provided us, as we agreed to earlier, a periodic update of the status of the National Grid power plant, substation that's scheduled to be constructed on Ashaway Road, Route 216 in town. They recently submitted plans for an environmental review to Rhode Island DEM in anticipation of receiving the necessary environmental permits for the project. And this review by Rhode Island DEM is expected to last approximately six months.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Okay. Next on our agenda, under Old Businesses, to discuss and consider approving a bid award to William Anthony Excavating Incorporated for the South Drive Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of up to $131,652.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that the Hopkinton Town Council approve a bid award to William Anthony Excavation for the South Drive Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of up to $131,562.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion, folks?
I, as I've said numerous times, when it comes to bids, it's really always interesting the spread of the cost of different bids that come before the council on these different things. That's what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, I wanted to just, maybe, Bill, you can just relay the Anthony Construction Company, the William Anthony, that I appreciate them holding the line, because they held the line on the cost, right?
Since August.
Since August, yeah. So, tell them, we appreciate them doing that, because, you know, I don't cost rise often, and I appreciate them holding the line, of course.
Sure, they've been very cooperative.
Yeah, very cooperative.
Minor question, the agenda says 131652, and the motion says 131562, which is it?
131562.
Okay, that's what I made the motion on. Any matter?
Well, second, Bill.
Oh, Scott already did.
Okay.
I did. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Sylvia.
So, motion made in second, any further discussion, folks?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our manager for, I know, I don't know, it's been more than a year, has it been a couple years, you've been trying to get this done, and not, and just continuing on even when we didn't have the money, and then we had the money, we didn't have enough, and it's gonna be paid for by a grant. And, anyway, I wanna thank you for that, for the taxpayers, on behalf of the taxpayers, and the neighbors really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
If only further comment I would make in addition to one about the bids is that this is a small project compared to other public works projects we have in town, and it just shows you how costly public works projects can be, if they're not inexpensive, even a small project.
This is a 40-year-old problem, it's not surprising.
Frank?
Yes?
I just wanna make sure the taxpayers understand that we are not spending $131,562 out of town funds. Most of this, 75% of this cost-
Is through the grant.
Is through the grant.
Yep.
The local share, according to what I see here, is $38,455.
Right, right, yep, thanks. Okay, motion made in second, any other discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Bill. Okay. Next, under New Business, folks, is to update on recent assessments. Tax assessor Chris Broschew will give us an idea of where we go from here. We had a full townwide revale, and everyone's, I think, got letters in the mail about their values going up or down, and Chris can maybe just take it from there.
Sure, good evening. They have mailed the letters, the letters were mailed out on April 9th, and the letter should have the old value and your new value, and it also has a website that you can go to, so you can view your new property record card. The letter also gives you a couple of ways to make an appointment if you have any questions on your new valuation or the data itself. You can either call a toll-free number, or you can go online and schedule an appointment online. If you, if you have a hard time with coming here for one of the hearings, then you can also appeal in writing, and as long as that's into the tax assessor's office by April 29th. But if you also just have some questions, and you just wanna have a phone conversation, they certainly can call, and we can try to, we can have one of the specialists, you know, call them back and try and answer their questions over the phone. When people do have questions on, and they're appealing, sometimes another inspection is required, sometimes the inspector, the agents out in the field weren't able to get in, so then they'll have to go in. But everybody that does come for an appeal will get a letter, and that letter will say whether there was an adjustment or not in their value. And if they haven't received a letter, if they could please give us a call at the tax assessor's office. But you can also go on the town website, and that has both links to the old property record cards and the new property record cards. And I think that's, I think that's it. That's where we are right now.
You said there's folks in vision that are here that'll answer a lot of the questions, do they?
Yes, we have a representative that's here, and we'll be having hearings through Saturday, the 26th.
All right, I'll start on my right.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia?
The, we've talked about it before, in case anybody out there doesn't know, and Jesse from Finance is here as well, if I get anything wrong, just let me know. Basically, we've talked about it, basically, you do a revale, and this is a full revale of your town. The tax rate, for instance, our valuation went down, unfortunately, by 10 and 1/2 percent, so that means that, you know, what's the new tax rate? Well, it's gonna go up, but that doesn't mean your taxes go up by that amount. You still have to raise taxes, and because the value went down, you still have to raise the same amount of money, so the tax rate goes up. Basically, everybody should pay just about the same, depending on whether you did things to your home, or depending on the age of your home, whether it's new or old, or whatever. So, basically, you pay the same. However, it's also budget, budget time. So, if it wasn't budget time, in our last budget session, we had, we were talking about this, and the tax rate after this revale would have been about, and this is, could change a little bit, but it would have been about $22.09. Because we made some changes at the budget, we had additional funds that we didn't need to hang on to from last year's tax collections, et cetera, we had extra money, and also because we changed the tax collection rate, we've actually changed that $22.09 down to $21.29.
Twenty-nine cents.
Twenty-one dollars and 29 cents. So, because of the budget changes, we were able to decrease the tax rate by 80 cents. So, therefore, people are gonna see a decrease in what they paid last year because of that 80 cents, and maybe because of the valuation change. So, take those two together, I think people are gonna feel okay. But if anybody out there wants to know generally what their tax rate, because everybody wants to know, well, what's the new number? It's, and the budget time isn't over, it's almost over, but it's about $21.29 at this time. And if it changes, it'd only be by penny, anyway, so, okay.
Thank you. Barbara?
I would assume that this is probably the right time to encourage people to look at those property cards, to make sure there's no mistake on them, or an issue that, you know, hadn't come up before?
Absolutely, yes.
You know, I would think that would be something you might encourage people to do, because then they really should look at the new property card, make sure it's correct.
Yes.
It sounds like this is the right time to do it, since you only do this effectively every 10 years.
Right, right, and on the letter, it does, you know, it just has the value, so you would have to go to those two websites to be able to see the information and how they came up with those numbers.
And it's also good for them to see their home on a property card, make sure it has the right bedrooms, and bathrooms, and garages, and sheds, and whatever else that seems to be important on the property card.
Yes.
I think it's just the right time, thank you.
Good point. David?
Sylvia said every word I wish I'd said.
Okay.
She said she was right on the money, and so she did a great job explaining it, and I think, I agree, I think that people, those who can fathom the math should sit down, use that figure of 2129, multiply it times a thousands of tax valuation, and it'll give you a good idea of what you're paying compared to what you paid this year.
Right, okay. I think we're all set. Chris, thanks for staying, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, under New Businesses, to formulate a response to letter received from Charahoe School Committee Chairman William Day to attend the first joint meeting of the Charahoe governing bodies. Boy, is that a loaded question.
I got a lot to say.
Oh, boy, anyway, we'll start on the left here. David, go ahead.
I'm gonna pass for the moment. I'm sorry, you're mine.
Barbara?
Oh, I'm not.
That's why I passed.
Yeah, thank you, dear.
Give you my time.
My assumption is what we're here to do is submit two agenda items, but I assume we're discussing a number of agenda items in order to determine what two they may be, and my understanding is it's with specific reference to section and language from the Act, since we need to get something to them by September, I mean, by May 5th. So, I went through the Charahoe Act. I don't know if anyone else has this wonderful topic.
Actually, you know what, Barbara? I, from my perspective, I was just looking for us to, and you guys tell me if I'm wrong, I wanted to know if we, as a body, wanted to at least go. If we don't wanna go, it doesn't matter what the Act says or it doesn't say. So, I think, I don't really wanna get into the Act itself and what two submission items, I wanna just know, as a body, do we wanna even go?
Can I respond?
Um, no.
One second.
No. My understanding in this is that you can't make a decision to go unless you know what you may want to talk about. I think it's a valid question on whether we even want to be there, but they have asked us to submit two agenda items politely, and I think we should discuss what is a possibility, and then decide if they are worth going to the meeting, as it's been established by the school committee. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think unless you know what you want to discuss in the first place, or even possible to discuss, since all four bodies have to agree to it, I think that we should at least put on the table things that could be addressed.
But I don't think we're gonna come to a consensus on two items tonight for all five of us. At least, I'm not prepared to come up with items, because I really don't know-
I am.
Well, that's fine, you can come up with the two items, I just wasn't prepared for that.
I'm actually prepared to bring up five or six items. Since we have to get this to him by May 5th, and this is the 21st, it's not a lot of time.
I know that.
And we can't do another meeting before May 5th.
Well, I may have a special meeting, though, Barbara, I'm not willing, I'm not wanting to go through this Act. I mean, if you wanna submit your two items, that's fine, I just wasn't prepared, I missed, I read it a totally different way. I wanted for us as a body to just acknowledge whether we are going to go or not, and be able to have a quorum, that's all.
If we have a quorum, we also need to have-
We do.
Concepts.
Right, absolutely.
And so, basically, we're not having any concepts, we're making a decision without even a discussion.
Well, and you can, you can bring forward your two items, or whatever items you think are appropriate, that's fine. I'm just not going through the Act. I wasn't prepared to go through that to that extent. I just didn't know if we even, as a body, I know what some folks feel, but I didn't know as a body what we wanted to do. So, why don't you ramble off your few items that you would like to have potentially as-
Because it says with specific reference to section and language, so you'd have to-
Oh, I know, but I, I don't wanna turn, we're not a school committee, I'm not turning it into a school committee meeting today. I just wanna know, if you have items, great, let us know, because I wasn't prepared to present items, I just wanna know if we wanna go.
Okay, so I can present items.
Yep.
And since it had to be by specific reference to section and language from the Act, the first one, I guess I'd just give it to you on Lisa.
Sure.
It would be on the piece of paper you gave us, the unofficial compilation of the Charahoe Act, page 5. Most of these sections, 6, 7, and 8, are discussing the payment of the bonds, and there are two places where this could be added, section, another section, not section 8, but section 9, or some other section, delineating payment for all bonds that would have to do with a third, third, third of notes and bonds for construction, rather than doing things, as I'll say later on, that has to do with percentage of kids. So, I think it could be added in this section, although there is a section further back, which would be also a good section. It could also be on page 17, under number 7, which is section 15, number 7, where they discuss construction costs. In each year subsequent to the passage of the Acts, construction costs shall be borne by each member town in the same proportion as the enrollment of students from that town bears to the total student enrollment of the district. We could discuss the changing that to thirds for the construction costs, which is what we've already done.
So-
So, I mean, that's, so changing to a third is one of the items.
Is that an agenda item?
You know, it would have been one of the items possible on the school agenda. The other one could be section 10.
Hold on, hold on, there's no more.
They're up there on the wall. Oh, I see papers.
Discussion zoning board review.
Uh-oh. Sorry about that, we'll get them.
Thanks, Lisa.
We forgot.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess till Lisa gets the agendas. Thank you.
Can you read the agenda item that you want?
Yeah. It's under, the second item under New Businesses, to formulate response to letter received from Charahoe School Committee Chairman William Day to attend first joint meeting of the Charahoe governing bodies.
And the letter is right here, with everything on it they'd like us to address. I know, but then-
This is gonna be, this is gonna be the packet.
Well, the agenda we're coming, Lisa's getting the agenda's file.
This is gonna be probably taken.
What?
This is left, and it'll be Phil Day.
This is the letter we're addressing.
The agenda is the agenda, it's just the one page, but the letter is part of what the material is before you, sure.
Can we show this again?
Yeah, sure, if you want. Yeah, it's a public document. I'd like to see it. I have my notes here, but-
That's why I passed by some of the requests, but some are-
No, we're waiting. Where this committee came from? They're gonna form a committee.
Right now, it's my turn.
One second, Georgia.
In line of rush, what's the big rush?
So, the next page would be page 8, section 10.
Call a meeting back.
Can I call a meeting back to our Hopkinton Town Council?
Thank you. Page 8, section 10, 1A, the concept of nine members, I'm certainly interested as an agenda item, as opposed to 11. I have a question, page 12, section 12. There shall be an unpaid regional school district finance committee, which I really don't know if we even do this, and I don't know whether we keep this, or whether we do it or not. I think that could be an agenda item. Page 13, section 13 is the matriculation, a student who enters an elementary school and kindergarten, we could clarify it on those who are not in kindergarten but starting in another grade, or we leave that as school policy, I think that's discussable. Page 14, section 14, number 2, the determination by any member town to withdraw. Such employees whose service are no longer required shall become employees of the member town withdrawing, provided that these positions are required by the withdrawing town. That would obviously be like a Charleston Elementary School has elementary school teachers, but you also have to fire middle school and high school teachers, so they would become employees of the town leaving, or they should be left for two years until they build another middle school, high school. So, I think that could be addressed in what we do with the employees for the school department. I think number, section 14, number 5, this is for operating expenses for each fiscal year, a portion thereof shall be apportioned to the relationship of their respective pupil enrollment. This may also be a space where we can discuss a third, a third, a third on fixed costs or semi-fixed costs, as well as the relationship of pupil enrollment.
You mean page 14?
Page 16, number 5. Page 17, number 9, which is also section 14. Treasurer of each member town shall forward monthly to the regional school district treasurer the apportioned operating and construction costs for that fiscal year. At the moment, we do it on the 1st of a month. It might be very interesting if we could change that to a date after the taxes have actually arrived, so perhaps that would be the 15th of the month rather than the 1st, so that many of the towns like Hopkinton didn't have to take a tan out.
So, how many items has Barbara had?
I don't know.
I'd prefer not to have a meeting at all. I think that previous councils and the voters have been clear, as far as I'm concerned, as I've mentioned before, and as we know, this is coming about because of, is coming from Richmond. It started in 2009, when they wanted to make changes to the Charahoe Act, and there were a couple of items, and that was the membership, and also whether or not to allow students in the elementary schools to be moved around. So, in your town, for instance, the town of Hopkinton, if you go to the Hope Valley, or you intended to go to, your kids to go to Hope Valley School, it would allow the school committee the authority to have them go to Richmond, or go to Charleston, or in that, in other words, to be able to move children around for whatever reason. So, Richmond has been pursuing those two items. I only know that in 1996 and in 2001, Charleston and Hopkinton, and I don't know where Richmond stood, I asked Lisa to look at the voting record, and that takes time, I just asked her today, but I do know from memory that in 1996, Charleston overwhelmingly, and Hopkinton in a four-to-one vote, because we did look those numbers up previously, voted not to allow these children in the elementary schools to be moved around. Councilor Davis, the Richmond Town Council, brought this issue back, the elementary school issue back in 2009, and the answer from the Hopkinton Town Council was no, they didn't wanna do it. Charleston was not interested at that time. Again, Councilor Davis brought it up again recently in this past year, and he brought it up at the last omnibus and the one before. Recently, when we had a small meeting, Councilor Davis just said, you know, in the end, if this issue eventually gets decided and nobody wants it, then he'll drop it, he's not gonna bother with it. As far as I'm concerned, it's been dropped over and over and over, and it's Richmond that's pursuing this. And in the letter that we received from Chairman Day, and I wanna quote, Superintendent Ritchie recommended in the school committee approved a different way of approaching revisions to the Act. There is general agreement that the current approach is not working. I think that they're just not listening, and they haven't listened when the voters in councils said no. When Hopkinton in the past was near, the elementary school in Hope Valley was near capacity, and Ashley Elementary School was near capacity, they added temporary classrooms. And that was years ago, and those classrooms have been there for years, and these are, you know, they just construct them right on, right on the playground, and they exist. And they've been there, and enrollment went down, they didn't need them anymore, and they took them out after all these years. Well, if Richmond needs more classrooms, why didn't they take those and reinstall them? Or why doesn't Richmond put up, I mean, I don't mean Richmond, but why can't they put up classrooms in Richmond? They could've used those, or they could put up classrooms, just like they did in Hopkinton. I think one of the things I heard at the, at the school committee meeting, because the chairman was there back in the 90s, he was a member of the school committee then, I was on the town council, and committee member, school committee member Greg Kenny was the chairman, and Bill Day, and this was just a few meetings ago, said, because he remembered this, he said that the voters were in, the parents were so upset about giving them the authority to move kids around, that he, and this is his quote, that he was surprised that Greg Kenny lived through it. Were you there that night? That's how angry people got. Why are we bringing it up again? Why are we gonna have a meeting to go over stuff that we're not gonna end up agreeing to anyway? So, I see no need for a meeting.
So, you have no agenda items?
I have no agenda items.
Okay, all right, Scott, go ahead.
I'm salivating.
Well, try not to salivate too much, and get your answers right.
This is my favorite agenda item of the night. First of all, this whole thing is patently absurd, and I remind you, first of all, that if you get a copy of the Charahoe Act that says unofficial, because it seems to be all over the place, and we'd think that a government document would, you'd have an official version when you get it.
Let me just explain that. That unofficial compilation was undertaken, I forget how long ago it was, when it first became solicited, by the solicitors from the three towns, to bring the laws all into one place, because in order to figure out what the Charahoe Act said, you had to go hopscotch all through the laws that had been passed over the years. you had to go hopscotch all through the laws that had been passed over the years. What we did is, in our best judgment, took the law and put it all into one place. So, there's nothing... And we all agree on what the laws said and where they should be and all of that. So, it says unofficial compilation because we three undertook it in order to make it easier for the towns. But it's not the general laws. But we have a reference to every general law in there. So, there's no question that that is a correct compilation of what the current state of the law is.
I think it'd be a clarification. I think I do remember that. The thing is, first of all, consider the timing. You don't put... Have a committee get together, put two agenda items, set up a meeting immediately when the legislature adjourns it usually at the end of June. That's really preposterous. And if we really believe how we govern our local school district, you wouldn't do a rush job short of an emergency. There's no emergency. Also, traditionally, there's a Charahoe Act Subcommittee, a committee that deals with this. There's no compelling reason to do this. And the whole thing, I believe, would be unproductive. A lot of this is generated by the antics of the Richmond Town Council this year. And I remind my fellow councillors that the Richmond Town Council went against traditional protocol and had a legislator, Representative Valencia, and I don't know if he had Kathy Koo Rumsey introduce the bill in the Senate, to go behind the backs of the voters because the voters wouldn't have place to vote on them. And I encourage the audience and the people watching on video to check those bills out. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head. That those bills would take effect. They were submitted without the endorsement of the Charleston Town Council, the Charahoe School Committee, the Hopkinton Town Council. You just don't do things like that. And also, traditionally, Charahoe Acts are so important that every town has a veto power because the Charahoe Act can impact the member towns differently. Okay? The... I don't have any changes. And we... And another thing that really concerns me is the appreciation of the role of all in Charahoe matters. And I'm specifically talking about the school committee and the three members of town councils. I don't agree with this philosophy that has been put forward that things have to initiate from the town council. I mean, from the Charahoe School Committee. Charleston has brought that up. The Charahoe School District was formed by the towns of Charleston, Richmond, and Hopkinton. And they were formed out of necessity because South Kingston and Westy years ago would take their students. And originally, it was seven through 12. The clarification on matriculation. I'd like to know what all the four solicitors think because this is what concerns me specifically with the Charahoe Act. The solicitor for the Charahoe Act... Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe he said that they can institute... They can make changes without a vote of the people, which they probably can. But I don't support that or endorse that. Although the Charahoe Act usually spells out how you handle Charahoe Act changes, and all the member towns have to agree. But the thing about this is this matriculation thing that Richmond is very hot about. I'd like to know what the three solicitors of the towns think. And I believe the Charahoe Solicitor thinks they can do it. But the school committee supposedly is reluctant to do that. And I'm not necessarily... I don't endorse... I'm not endorsing matriculation. I'm just looking at the legal issues. But that's also what Richmond is trying to do without a vote of the people. And that's what I feel. I think it's disgusting, really, that people who serve the people would actually put in changes without a vote of the people, which has been traditionally done. And we have a Charahoe Act Subcommittee if we feel so compelled. And I don't think necessarily we have to change the Charahoe Act. But this isn't the time. Something to be done last year. We've got to remember one thing. The Charahoe Omnibus failed. And I had put out to the press before the Omnibus Meeting that we should all try to give and take. But the Omnibus Meeting was a disaster. Rich... Possibly because of the Richmond Council, we had to have separated agendas and all that type of stuff. And it just didn't go down well. So, basically, I'm against it. And I think it's preposterous to entertain even having a meeting at this time.
So, you had no agenda items either?
Absolutely not, other than not to do this.
Okay. David, you're next.
Yep. I have no problem attending this kind of a meeting because I tell you, it says right here, "The following guidelines will be applied during the joint meeting. The only potential revisions that will be discussed during the joint meeting will be those that all four governing bodies agree to discuss. If we don't want to discuss it, we as a council can say, 'We don't want to discuss it,' and it won't be discussed." And the second point here says, "The only potential revisions that will be submitted to the legislature will be those that all four governing bodies agree to submit. If we don't agree to it, it won't be submitted." That's what it says right here. These are the rules that Bill Day has put down. So, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want them saying, "Well, you aren't even trying, so you didn't even want to come." I'm willing to go. It may be another Omnibus Meeting situation where it's just a back and forth, back and forth. Nothing gets done. But I don't want anybody looking back and saying, "Oh, yeah, well, we could have gotten something done, but the Hopkinton Town Council didn't want to go." I'm willing to go. I'll go. It may not provide any substance, but I'm willing to go.
Mr. President, can I respond to that?
No, I have a question too. Sorry. It's two of them. And he has to talk.
Hi. Go ahead, quickly, Scott.
First of all, the Richmond Town Council hasn't asked Representative Valencia to withdraw the two pieces of legislation that weren't approved by the other councillors in taking away the vote of the public to vote on them changes. That's my answer to that. Your remark. Thank you.
Barbara.
Having said the nine items I brought forth, I was at that school committee meeting, and I told them I agreed with George Abbott that we should start a Charahoe Act Subcommittee, not through the school department. Section 19 says, "Upon the acceptance and approval of this act, the town councils," that's us, "of the member towns," that's still us, "are hereby vested with the power and authority to enter into agreements on behalf of their respective towns," that's still us, "and with each other jointly and severally." It has nothing to do with the school committee. I have no problems going to this meeting either. I agree with David. If they want us to attend a meeting, that's charming and wonderful, and I don't mind going. However, under no circumstance does the school committee bring the Charahoe Act forward. It is up to the three town councils to do so. And they certainly can do so as a Charahoe Act Subcommittee that we could do among our town councils. But it does not include the school department and the school district's school board. It has nothing to do with it. Section 19 doesn't have them anywhere in it.
Oh, Barbara, I forgot to mention one of your items, just so you'll know. The thing about the finance committee. There is a functioning Charahoe Finance Committee, yes. And they meet on a regular basis. Agnes is a member. Oh, should I hear? Agnes is a member. And of course, our treasurer is. Our treasurer and every other treasurer in the town.
We could get a report from them sometimes.
Yeah. They always meet prior to the Omnibus Meeting, too, at 5:30.
All right, thanks. Yeah, from my perspective, like I said, I didn't delve into it too deeply. I just wanted to get an idea as a body, do we want to even go? I mean, I just didn't want it to be... I didn't want our council to say no. There's a lot of rules. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here on this stuff. I just wanted to at least be a seat at the table and listen. And, you know... And basically, that's all I wanted. And, you know, even if no one wants to go, I'm probably still going to go just so I can hear it. But, you know, I just... I just wanted us to at least be able to attend. And I certainly am not going to... For me, anyway, I'm not going to agree to anything because there's a lot of stuff in here that I know are not issues that we as a town want to open up, so.
Frank, I think our presence at that meeting does not endorse one thing. It simply says, "We're there. We're not the people that upset the apple cock. We're going to listen to what you have to say." Doesn't mean we have to agree with it. Just I'm going to... I'm willing to listen. And if I don't like it, I'm not going to vote for it. I'm not going to say, "You bet." If I like it, I might, but...
Well, we had our meeting with the presidents, me, Tom, and Joe, and Barry. Joe did say he would withdraw or have Larry withdraw that two pieces of legislation if we all got together. That's what he told me. So, take it for what it's worth.
And we don't really have other agenda items than if we don't choose, I suppose. But I'll get nine in case they want any.
No, I respect you guys, you know, if you didn't want to go. I mean, I know it's a big issue. And I just didn't want, as a body, for us to just not go and say no. I'm not saying we're going to agree to do anything.
Mr. President.
But just go.
I'm going to offer a motion, and I want to pull people on the spot. I move that the Hopkinton Town Council does not participate in this proposed meeting.
Thanks, Scott.
My second.
Motion made in second. No, no second, no third.
No, I gave the second.
I'm sorry. Okay, second. Okay, no.
Discussion.
Motion. Discussion, go ahead.
I'm fine with going. I would agree with Frank, so I don't have a problem. I don't mind appearing. I don't know whether anyone... Whether we have to actually put in two agenda items. And I certainly put in nine, none of which I expect anyone to be interested in. So, I am happy to go.
Win or lose. No, you... The public doesn't get points of order. Only the body gets points of order.
Mr. President, would you take comments from the public?
It's not a hearing, but I'll decide.
As it relates to the motion, I'd like to suggest that, just simply, that the reason I don't want to go is because, once we have this meeting... Yeah, I don't mind attending meetings and listening. But I have listened to what the voters have wanted. And they have, over and over and over, not wanted the things that Richmond wants, specifically this elementary school moving kids around. Even the school committee voted against the nine-member committee thing. So, I'm not even worried about that. They don't even want it. So, the re... If we end up having this and knowing that in the past council bodies have voted against it, voters have voted against it, and then we have the meeting, it causes a lot of upset to parents. That's why I don't like it. That's why I don't like it. Because it's not going to go anywhere. If it ends up going to a vote, and if it does, they're going to kill it. And they're going to get all upset and mobilize and over nothing because they're going to vote it down anyway. It's just... I don't like to put parents through that. That's where I'm coming from.
That's fine. But I think as a body, I think saying no right from the beginning and not being a seat at the table, at least to listen... I'm not saying... I'm not saying that we're going to do anything different that we currently don't have.
Okay. I made my point.
You know, so that's from my perspective. I don't think there's...
The public can't speak.
It's not a public hearing, Georgia.
Well, they usually get to speak on every item. So, so here.
We might know some things that you don't know. Yeah. And we might, you know...
Just keep it short. Oh, we got a motion on the table, too. Do you want to finish that?
We'll finish that. One second, Georgia. One second, please. Motion made in second. We didn't get a third. We have discussion. Motion failed.
Just to not have a meeting.
Right. Motion failed.
No, no, no. I made a second to the motion.
You need to vote on it.
Why don't I just vote on it?
Sorry, let's make a vote on the motion that's on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we're in favor of not having a meeting.
Not having, okay.
Yes. Aye.
Not in favor?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay.
You should take comments.
Yeah, it says here that individuals can speak.
Who wants to go, George?
George Abbott from Hopkinton, a member of the school committee. I think you... There's an opportunity cost to having this meeting. You might lose out on possibly sharing equally for operational costs. That's probably going to get thrown out. And it's not... It's not going to be brought up. If you had a Charahoe Act revision Subcommittee, you could sit down and discuss these things. To me, you're just throwing red meat at Richmond. It's a bad mistake. You know, you made it, you have to live with it.
Okay. Thanks, Georgia. Georgia.
What's happened is Richmond has brought this up. And Richmond's got some problems because they've got 290-some properties on the books. They're overcrowded, and that's why they're pushing like crazy. For the first time, we've had a solicitor in Charahoe that's interpreting the Charahoe Act differently. And he's telling them over there that they can change the Charahoe Act by policy. All right? And there's a way that they're going to try to do that. And I don't think you should let that happen. And I don't think the voters should be cut out of this particular process. And we've set precedents over the years. For 50 years, we've had Charahoe. And 50 years' worth of solicitors, however many there have been, have always interpreted the Charahoe Act in a certain way, especially about matriculation, especially about representation. And now, we've got a solicitor that's coming up with altogether different interpretations. I think it's a problem. And we're getting pushed into this much too fast. And I sat on an exit committee when Charleston was going to withdraw. And we did five binders' worth of information. And when we did the five binders' worth of information, they shelved it. But it's sitting over there. Five binders' worth of information about the Charahoe Act and what should be done. We've also had the management study done by... Tell me who it was, Scott.
MGT.
MGT. We've had these things, and they're there. Alls we've got to do is use them. And the Charahoe Act's there. And alls we have to do is use that. And if you look at the Charahoe Act, it tells you, if you're not happy with your representation, there's a formula that you can use, Richmond can use, to fix it. That's what they should do. And as far as taking the kids and moving them across lines, the way the governance is set up, if I have a kid in Hopkinton and they send him to Charleston, where's my voice? Who's going to represent me? I don't vote for anybody over there. I vote for people in Hopkinton to represent me. You can't do those kind of things without changing, you know, monumentally, the whole Charahoe Act. You change one part of it, it changes everything, cross lines here, there, and yonder. You're just going to have a real sci-fugality. So, you know, be very careful in what you do and do it very slowly. And I'm not saying things can't be changed for the better, but you better be very careful. When the founding fathers or whoever they were that started this Charahoe Act, they were very careful in how they, you know, constructed it because there's three towns involved. They're not two. There's three. You have to be very careful about your representation, very careful about what you're going to do with your kids. And a lot of people in the towns now, they don't understand how the school systems work. So, be very careful of what kind of a box here you open it up. And don't open Pandora's box up unless you know where you're going with it. But I'm concerned about if you met... I'm understanding only two people from the town council will go to this meeting. Not all of you.
It says a council, town council.
Whole thing.
Whole thing.
What... What was proposed by the school committee was two people from the council.
I don't think so.
Not according to Chairman Bill Day's letter.
If they all go, you can get outvoted by this committee. All right? You could get outvoted.
Not according to the rules.
Georgia, Georgia, it says right here, Bill Day, Chairman Day has said this. "The only potential revisions that will be discussed during the joint meeting will be those that all four governing bodies agree to discuss." Number one. Number two, "The only potential revisions that will be submitted to legislature will be those that all four governing bodies agree to submit." If we don't agree to it, it doesn't go in.
It's not going to get submitted.
And if you submit it to legislature...
If we do.
If you did. Where the voters come in.
Well, we represent the voters.
According to the Charahoe Act, this stuff gets voted on.
All right, thank you, Georgia. I appreciate your advice. Thank you. Yes, Dorothy.
Is this a new committee? I mean, I've never seen Charahoe governing bodies in print.
It's just a new format.
Okay.
I guess.
So what are the procedures, policies, and charges of this body?
Each of, each of the bodies is going to convene as, the three councils will each convene as a council, and the school committee will convene as the school committee.
So are there written descriptions of these charges, expectations, and are there policies in place?
For what?
For these meetings, for instance, they send you a letter and say...
It's not gonna be a meeting of four bodies, it's gonna be a meeting of three councils and the school committee. Each convening their own meeting.
What also disturbs me is the fact that Mr. Husband noted that unless all four bodies agree, you won't be sending this to the legislature, and I wish to state publicly, and for the record, that I do not assign, give, surrender, or allow anyone my right to vote on changes to the Charahoe Act. I ask that the town council have our town attorney review the Charahoe Act, and provide a written opinion of the right of the voters to vote on changes to the Charahoe Act, and provide this to all Hopkinton citizens, including the town council and the school committee members from the town of Hopkinton.
Thank you, thank you, Dorothy, I appreciate, Mimi? Yep, go ahead, take your time. No, Scott.
It's public.
Mary W. Johnson, Hope Valley, I moved here in 1979, and from 1979 to present, Richmond has strained and fussed and embarrassed Hopkinton over and over and over again about its schools, right now, with the only blue-ribbon school in the system as being Hope Valley, they very much covet that school and its teaching quality, that's why they're fussing to try to get their kids from the River Community and others to push over onto our school, though voters in Hopkinton for 35 years have had to vote on any Charahoe Act changes, I regard this meeting as totally unofficial, it's a kangaroo court, it has no basis in law or regulation, either in the Charahoe Act, or in any kind of county, you know, auspices, and I would regard any of you going to this meeting, and voting to go, as a subjugation of the voters' right to vote on anything in Charahoe, every single one of you that voted, you three are in political jeopardy for taking away my vote, you have no right to open this can of worms, Mrs. Capalbo, and just because you intellectually think it would be fun to discuss all that, you could really, really jeopardize most of the citizens in this town, uh, we are number 11 school district, I don't know whether you think it's so good, but according to other rating services, we're number 11 school system in the state of Rhode Island, and in the six New England states, we're at the dead bottom in terms of quality of education, and now, our neighboring town, the very same town and their lawyers, who said that our planning chief could sign a contract for the town for the water line to come across and serve Wood River Village, or whatever it was called, that's the same attorney involved with feeding those two legislators to put in that change to the Charahoe Act in the legislation, I think you're going into the lion's den, I think you're being tricked and hoodwinked, and you're gonna throw away all of what Hopkinton has for its sovereignty, and I very much abhor the fact that you three think some kind of intellectual ego is going to let you go in there and argue, it's a trap, and you better realize it's a trap, preserve our blue-ribbon school, and if you wanna do something to really help, bring our fifth and sixth graders back to our schools, the fact that they had this big drug, you know, incident over there shows that Richie can't even take care of his own campus, particularly the middle school, that wasn't even the high school, it was the middle school where those drugs were found, when I argued last year against the budget, I got calls from parents who said that there were teachers teaching dead drunk in their classrooms, and there were others that were taking drugs, they have no drug policy to test their, their teachers there, you know, I know they brought in dogs and went to the, the student parking lot, but they totally avoided the teacher parking lot, you guys, you know, if Richmond has an overage, let them do what Sylvia said, put up a temporary classroom, or better than that, make all the administrators go back into the, the school buildings, and take over that illegally-built administrative building, and make that another elementary school for Richmond, the River kids would go straight down Switch Road, and they wouldn't have a 40-minute ride, you know, or let them build a new elementary school right there, take over a wing in the not-too-full middle school, but Hopkinton should not bend over to this, you know, if, if that legislation is still before the legislature that Richmond did, I don't think you owe them a thing, in fact, you owe them a lawsuit, and that's why I'm here, if you go and you change anything to take my and other citizens' vote away, you'll all be sued for malfeasance, thank you very much.
Well, Mimi, let me just, can I just...
I am really pissed!
Okay, well, anyway, just from my perspective, I'm not looking to give anything away.
Well, don't go then, don't let your ego force you to go, say no!
I have no ego, so that's, that's the end of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think you're doing this, you're a little confused.
Yep, alright, anyway, so, that's that, next on our agenda is for Barbara, Councilor Capalbo, to explain the source of the figures that she provided the council on the Charahoe fixed cost to aid the council members' review of the figures, no discussion, so just Barbara, tell us quickly and briefly where you got them from, if anybody wants to expand on those items, you can kinda just tell us, like I said, where you got, what budget you got it from...
Right.
And your rationale.
Thank you.
Quickly.
Efficiently. The reason that we were asked to do this, we were asked to supply to the school department, when we asked about the third, third, third on fixed costs, they said, "Well, what do you mean by fixed cost?" And so I have gone through the main budget, if you take a look at the fixed costs that I gave you, there's, the first two page says executive summary, that is from the main budget, not the, not the budget they give you, um, at the town couns, at the town financial meeting, it's the first budget, the one that comes out for us in December and January, if you turn to the first set, the Charahoe Regional School District budget on page, um, what do they call that? I believe they call that page four, uh, page one of two pages, the first one of two is an executive summary, I took a look at that, and what I'm trying to find are fixed costs, so things that don't have to do with how many students you have, but what is something that you would need for all the schools, the first two pages, you'll notice, fixed cost total from this executive summary of $6,99,073, um, but this is a fluffy executive summary, what I really did is I went through pages, the next set of pages, which is one through, well, it says 75, but there's actually a number more after that, if you go through those, what I did is I took the ride number, and its title, and its secondary number for department, and the total here, if people can go through this, you may find more things that are, you would think as fixed or semi-fixed costs, or you may look at some of the ones I have and decide it's not fixed or semi-fixed, but I took things like guidance and counseling, house leaders, overtime, tutoring, curriculum, principals, uh, school, office, all the building, upkeep, utilities, and maintenance, and they're all subtotaled, so that the final comes out to approximately $15,332,941, that's before you add the 35%, um, which are the pension, health, and life insurance costs for the manpower that does the library, the school office, the administration, the principals, the dentists, the doctors, the psychologists, the deputies, the senior administrators, the school board, uh, may, all the maintenance staff, you would still add 35% on top of that, but this is just a beginning, because this is something others can look through, too, and say, "Well, I think, for instance, there's a line on catering and refreshments," no, I didn't put that into my fixed costs, but maybe someone feels it's fixed, it's for testing, I mean, it's not like it's for a classroom, um, but I didn't add that, I didn't put in things like sending our kids to Groden Center, because those are our kids that we send, we never know which ones they'll be, but I did put in the charter school costs, which are shared by all of us, and the students don't go to us, so it doesn't have anything to do with how many teachers we have, so it's, this is the, you know, a five-page or six-page, or, okay, so it's nine or 10 pages, of information that says, "Here's where I broke it out, you may feel that it is of value or not, you can choose to add or take away, but I wanted you to know where I got it, so you could more easily go through it and decide what categories you feel may also apply to this cost breakdown for fixed or semi-fixed costs."
Yeah.
Just as it relates to her explanation, it's not a discussion, just so I can better understand what you just said, when you said at the beginning, okay, at the end, you got $15.3 million, but then you said a bunch of stuff, and then, so add 35%, now, in reference to that explanation...
Uh-huh.
For instance, I'll ask a question, I didn't quite understand that, what you meant, I didn't know why that wouldn't have been in there in the first part, for instance, you said a school committee, and, and so I wondered why some things might not be in that 15.3, like the superintendent, we always have to have one, so, and why did you say 35%?
Because it's, um, the pension, life insurance, and healthcare costs for the salaries, the very first line item I have is the number 51110 is salary expenses, there is, these are people, but these are just their base costs in the budget, the pension, life insurance, and healthcare, on top of this is another $35,000, which is not...
Percent, 35%.
35% is not here under pension.
Okay, so that was only pension, things like that, it wasn't all that other stuff?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it's only for salary expenses you have to add on top, because these are just base salaries, these are not full salaries, they're base, and then, then you have pension, life insurance.
Okay, so things like the school committee or the superintendent, that's part of the 15.3?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, alright, yeah.
So if anybody wants to expand, expand on Barbara's list, have at it, um, thank you very much, Barbara, for preparing that.
Because I was, what I was gonna say is that, once we know what this is, we could send it to the other councils to say, you know, if, we don't really wanna open up the whole ball of wax about money, but maybe we could legitimately...
Well, it's a starting point.
Exactly, it's a starting point for a, a more minor, like a $20 million section, rather than a $44 million section, but it's at least a starting point.
Thank you. Uh, next under new business is to consider a resolution in support of the municipal road and bridge revolving fund received from the Office of General Treasurer.
I do have a comment on that.
So, I wanna just read a quick memo, I think, from the, um, General Treasurer's office, "Tax is a resolution asking for support to have the municipal road and bridge revolving fund funded by the General Assembly this, oh, Assembly this year, last year it was signed into law appropriating approximately $7 million to start the fund, the fund allows municipalities to borrow money at a low rate, interest rate, to improve their roads and bridges through the Clean Water Finance Agency, by passing the legislation last year, the General Assembly created a substantial amount of savings for cities and towns to help rebuild and, and advance transportation infrastructure, the demand for the fund has been demonstrated by Rhode Island cities and towns submitting $30 million of project requests in the first year of operations," so, um, this is what we've, I think, agreed as a body to put on the referendum for our vote as this coming election, was to be able to authorize the, um, to borrow money through this agency, so I would think that we'd like to, perhaps...
Well, we're worried about bridges falling down, all over the state, we drive all over, so, I move that we support the resolution, second.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion, folks?
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like to amend it, and I'll just slow this out, in fact, I had a resolution in the Grange over in Connecticut, uh, the problem with public works is that the money generated from gasoline taxes, automobile registrations, license renewals, tolls, they go into the general fund, and the problem is that we have to take a strong stand to say that they shouldn't be diverting funds from revenues that generate the use of vehicles, which obviously use the roads, because part of the problem we have with public works is that people spend it on other things other than improving our infrastructure, and it would be nice if we had a where as in there that said, "We, we fully believe that revenues generated from, from things such as tolls, and, and gasoline taxes, and automobile registrations, and license renewals, a bigger portion of that should be applied to things that improve our infrastructure."
Well, maybe a second, maybe we can adopt as a council a resolution to that effect, but I'm not, I don't think we wanna change this one from the General Treasurer.
Okay, I'll, I'll go along with it, but I think that, that's something that we really have to look at.
Yeah, we can look at it as a separate piece, yes, Barbara?
I have one question on that, is it, um, are they doing it at the same amount, at 7 million? Or are they hopefully putting more money into it than that?
I don't know, Bill, you have an answer to that, I have no clue, I think they're gonna start with 7, right?
Well, they were supposed to start with 7 last year.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, uh, but basically it's a revolving fund, so if they put 7 million in, the, the money that they make on the interest is added to the 7 million, and then it's like 7.2 million the following year, whether or not they're gonna increase the base amount, I think that's subject to negotiation in the General Assembly.
Do they have the 7 million now, or did they decide not to do it last year?
Uh, they have 7 million for this current fiscal year, and then last Friday, the town received an email from Karen Grant, who's our local bond council, and basically, she stated that, "At this time, we don't know if the General Assembly will authorize additional funding for next fiscal year, but if the funds are authorized, your municipality will need authorization to borrow in order to access the program," so I guess the answer to your question is, we don't know whether or not they're gonna pass it, uh, I don't know exactly how much it's gonna be, but my guess it'll be a little bit more than 7 million dollars.
When we do the resolution, though, we can borrow from other organizations, not just from the water board, we didn't put just the...
That's correct.
We can borrow from other organizations, thank you, that's right, good.
Okay, so, motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, next under new business is to consider scheduling a special town council meeting to conduct boards and commission interviews, Lisa, I think you said we had, what, a half a dozen folks?
We have more than three.
Oh, okay.
I have a suggestion, uh, we have a special budget, a special town council meeting to deal with our budget, why don't we do it that night, because that will take no time at all?
What's the date?
It's usually a...
Monday, the 28th.
Yeah.
This month?
It's, I think it's May 12th.
May.
Oh, May.
It's May, well, wait a minute, I'm waiting, no, not the 28th, I didn't mean the 28th, we have a special town council meeting scheduled...
May 12th? Now, May 12th?
To adopt the budget.
May 12th.
There you go, May 12th.
That sounds fine, okay, what time is that meeting, Sylvia?
Uh, well, we didn't set a time.
Oh, we didn't set a time.
So we could start our special meeting at maybe, maybe 6:30, or should we have, do interviews first?
I have it down, it's a 7.
Yeah, budget first, maybe we should do the budget first, because there's staff people here, and they're gonna sit here on the clock waiting for us to do our interviews.
That doesn't take long, Sylvia, though, I'd rather do the interviews first.
Me, too. Well, no, that's right, there would, well...
It's just for you to look for...
Oh, well, yeah, just to adopt things.
Do the interviews first, let's do the interviews first.
Okay.
6:30 or 6:15, depending on how many we got.
6:30 is fine, I think, because Lisa, we don't have a date, a time for that?
Well, it's tentatively set for 7.
Okay, that's fine.
Lisa, how many do we have, do you know?
We have, I know we have at least three.
Okay, so, we may have more, because we've just had some recent resignations, like the planning boards coming up, things like that.
We're gonna have enough time?
So it'll be the 12th at 6:30? So 12th at 6:30?
Alright, alright, 6:30 interviews, and then after that.
Yes. Okay, that sounds good, okay, next under new business, discussion regarding instituting a seasonal special event permit, Mr. Husband?
Yeah, um...
This is your item, you wanna just explain what it is?
Exactly, um, we provide special event permits to various organizations over the course of a year, a lot of them are gratis, simply because they're, they're beneficial, uh, they're a benefit type of, uh, event, um, and they're not a profit-making venture, um, I thought to myself the other day, when, when the Pavilion came in here, and I like the Pavilion, and I do, I, I've eaten there, and I played golf, hit golf balls there, it's fine, I, I like the place, uh, but, but they, they received a special, uh, a special event permit from us for a number of events, which ranged throughout the, throughout the spring and into the summer, and basically, late summer, and, uh, we charged them... And we charged them $100, because that's the cost of a special event permit. We've also had people come in here, Campground is one of them, I remember, and we charged them $100 for one event. And I just don't think that's very fair. I would, so I would like to see the council consider reducing the cost of a single event permit to $50, and a seasonal, if we want to call it that, because it covers a lot of events, a seasonal permit to be maintained at $100. It just bothers me that somebody can get a seasonal permit, and they could have an event every day if they wanted to. They could have a, I don't know, a wedding, a wedding reception every day at their establishment, where somebody else has to pay the same amount for just one event. So, checking with Lisa, the town clerk, she told me that the special event permits don't, the amount raised by these permits isn't a lot of money. As a matter of fact, it's relatively small, considering the fact that we give away, or we provide a lot of these permits gratis, because they're non-beneficial events to the person holding. So I'd like to have the council discuss and possibly vote on the idea of reducing a single event permit to $50, and a seasonal, and calling it a seasonal permit, creating a seasonal permit for those who want...
Multi-event.
Multi-event, exactly. So I leave it at that.
Okay, David. Scott, you're up.
The only thing I think about in the summertime, you might have a business that doesn't do it, but they might do something for the Fourth of July, they might do something for Labor Day.
Right.
And they're both in the same, so if you go with a $50 rule, that's $100 right there.
Right.
So, and then you take a business like Pavilion, I'm sure they do more than two events during the summer from all indications, so... There's also a question, if you're honest there, you might have a business only does two things, that those major holidays during the summer.
Yeah.
Do you think it should be lower than 50? Maybe 30 or something?
I'm willing, I'm willing to go with a number. You know, we could say one event, two events, 10 events, whatever, but I do think we should pass it out. I think there should be a different cost for the people who have one or two events as compared to the person who has events throughout the summer season.
I think, I say potential problem with the $50, because some businesses, maybe a lot, maybe not in town, or many, but...
Make it 25.
Labor Day, Fourth of July, a big holiday.
Make it 25. Yeah. Sylvia, please.
Lisa, how many times, generally, do you think we, without, I'm not talking about waivers, do we hand out these licenses, these permits?
Maybe five, six times a year, tops.
Maybe five, three, five or six?
Sometimes less than that.
Okay. So it's not, so if it was reduced to $50, it's not gonna hurt your revenue line in a big deal?
Many times a nonprofit, and you...
Way the fee in.
Oh, that's different.
Anyway, you foster parents when they come in.
Mm-hmm.
I think I've made them, but they have to pick the other.
Yeah. So what I'd like to suggest is, I don't think, I'm sure we're probably all gonna agree that we need two different layers. You know, the seasonal, you know, thing. The amount, you know what I'd like to know? Charles Town deals with seasonal things and other types of permits, and I know they're in a different, you know, it's different over there, but I wonder what their ratio is, and I wonder, you know, what's the difference between the permits, the single one, and the seasonal ones? I'm not sure that $100 for one that runs all year, all summer long is a good number. I'm thinking it should be a little higher. As for the other one going lower, you only want to go so low, you want to make sure you recoup your costs. So I'm not sure what the costs are. And I, you know, I'd like to know from Lisa, you know, if it's, if there are advertising costs, I want to make sure that if it's $50, we're covering our own costs. Does $50 cover it?
Well, I bill them out for the...
Advertising.
Oh, so they have to pay for it anyway? Okay.
I have one...
Hold on one second, Scott.
Right. I have something along Sylvia's line, is that what exactly is a seasonal? You know, the beach considers it summer, but seasonal can be falls, summers, winters, springs. I mean, what is seasonal? I understand having them in different levels. I'm not sure. I think that's interesting. But it's called, what do we consider seasonal? The reason I'm asking is that...
Multi-event.
Multi-event, but we had, we had the campground in front of us just this last year, and they had three events for the summer at the campground on 216. And so if that was an individual, it'd be 150, because it's not seasonal, or they could do 100 for seasonal. And in that case, they could have more than three, but that was gonna be a problem with the neighbors. So...
So we need a little, a little work done.
Right. We just, we need to, we need, I mean, I don't think it's ready for a vote, but I think it's a good idea, but I think maybe some research, a little more research on how we can make it fair to people and label it correctly.
Can I put one more? Eject one more thing here, too?
Go ahead, David.
I'm a little, I'm a little concerned also that if we provide a seasonal permit, that we then lose control over exactly what kind of events these people have. And they could come in and say, "The Pavilion was very good, they told us they were gonna have car shows, and they were gonna have wedding receptions and that kind of stuff." But all, you know, all of a sudden, we get somebody that gets a seasonal permit, and they say, "Oh, we're just gonna have a couple little gatherings." And the next thing you know, we have a rock concert down there, and they say, "Well, you gave us a seasonal permit, and we didn't have to come back to see you for a new permit." So one of the reasons I think we have permits is to have some control over exactly what goes on, you know, to allow it or disallow it. So I might have a little problem with a seasonal permit and what the restrictions would be on a seasonal permit, where they have to list the things they're going to provide ahead of time, and then if they want something different, then they're gonna have to come in and see us for the additional events.
And also know that whenever we've had permits, if there have, or let's say, what happens, it becomes noisy and becomes a problem, they would normally call the police department and report something, depending on what it was. So in other words, so somebody's gonna hear about it, and you get back that there's a problem. If, let's say an event became a problem, and you'd already given them a permit, do we have a legal right, I don't know what the remedy is, can the council at a later date say, "Whoa, we got a problem, we need to revoke it," or we need to have...
You could revoke it if you have some significant...
And maybe it says so on the application.
Yeah.
That it may be revoked for cause.
You can revoke it if you've got a significant reason to do so, but if you're granting a seasonal pass, then you're gonna have a hard time finding a significant reason if you've given somebody a car loan.
Yeah. So we really need to weigh up...
You need a good application.
Yeah. And weigh up what they're doing and...
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I think doing that might create some issues. I think we should probably keep it the same, and just on a case-by-case before, when someone comes for a permit, and if it's an individual event, they're gonna specify that in the application, then we'd have some discretion on the fee, couldn't we? Just do it that way?
Plus, if, Bill just reminded me also, he asked me if it was an ordinance, and it is an ordinance, so it would be an ordinance amendment.
Okay, so it requires more information, right?
Dan, can you look at the ordinance too, and see how you would like to see it changed? And maybe we want to change some language, or add, and not call it seasonal, or clarify it or something, yeah?
Okay.
Well, the thing is, when we gave that permit to the Pavilion, and once again, I have nothing against the Pavilion, but they listed a number, eight or 10, events that they planned to have this summer, and we, for $100, we gave them the permit. Now, that's not to say, what happens if somebody comes along and says, "Gee, we'd love to have a wedding reception here," and they didn't have it on that initial list that they gave us, so now they've got another wedding reception there? So, you know, there's no, that list is set in stone. That list was just their assumption that they were gonna have these car shows and these weddings during the season. They could get rained out, for that matter. So, but it was nice that they gave us that list. I'm just concerned that once we gave them that permit to cover all these events, that they could stick a few more events in there. Or anybody could, if we gave them a big-time permit.
I don't think so.
You don't think they could do that?
No.
Did they have to, would they have to list, do you think, Sylvia, would they have to list every event they're gonna have if we gave them, gave them a so-called seasonal permit?
Pavilion can only do what they, they said they were gonna do in that application.
In the application.
Do you think this, it's gonna be consistent with the holiday ones we do in December as far as...
Well, I think David needs to do a little bit more research on the ordinance, because I don't know that you read that. Do that and...
Yeah, we killed it.